All right. Okay, let's call the workshop for April. April would be nice. Wouldn't look like this outside if it was April. March 4th. Do order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nordby.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Mayor Mungy.
Here. I get a motion to doubt the agenda, please.
So moved.
So move, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we got one item with various topics tonight. Dan's put together a great package to discuss some TIF basics, some general fund budget, enterprise fund budget, and 2026 budget process, and then give a quick finance update. So I will turn it over to Finance Director Dan Mike, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I don't know if I've ever done anything quick. I don't know where that quick overview is going to be, but yeah. I think a couple of meetings ago, we kind of talked about the tax increment financing or TIF and kind of wanted to have an update of where we're at. There's a lot of information here. I'm not going to go through all of it, try to keep it at a higher level and then answer any questions that you may have. But inside this PowerPoint and the material that was given to you, there's an overview of tax increment financing, how a TIF district is created, what drives the need for public financing, types of TIF districts, TIF eligible costs, TIF common methods for financing options, and it'll give you our city's districts and their expiration dates. And then on an annual basis, we have to provide a TIF disclosure, so the 2023 is out there. They're usually due August 1st of the following year. And then we do have, we did do some pool, pooling of TIF for TIF districts for two, for four, for six. And I'll kind of talk about that a little bit, and then the general pooling authority, and then the city may consider, want to consider some time in the future to develop a TIF policy, and then answer some questions that you may have. TIF is a financing tool that's established by the legislature to help cities have the ability to help attract development within their city. And there are certain costs that can be covered underneath the TIF. And the basic principle behind it, this next graph really kind of shows it better. The darker green component on the bottom is, is the taxes, a parcel or parcels that are being considered to go into a TIF district generating taxes today. And so the concept behind it is, is that after you meet certain qualifications, and the state legislation uses the but-for clause. And basically, they're saying that but-for tax increment financing, the development wouldn't move forward. And we can kind of give a little example on one that we did more recently in the Article VII Development, the old former Lilly Publishing Building. But that's what's created there. When the development occurs, it increases its value. And when the value is increased, there's going to be more taxes that are generated. In that gray area is those additional taxes. The city and the county and the school district will, will continue to receive that darker green throughout the life of a TIF district. That additional gray part then gets captured, is, all of it is, the city portion, the county portion, the school district, all of it, is then sent to the city, and then that's what goes to pay off any of the debts. And we'll talk about different financing options, but to pay off any debt that's associated with that TIF district until the TIF obligations, the debts are all paid off. Once that's all paid off and/or if the TIF expires, because they all have limitations of how many years they can be out, then after that point, then the jurisdictions, the city and the, the school and the, and the county will all then benefit by the increased value and the increased taxes. Then they're all shared again. And if you can remember, we get approximately a third of the taxes that are generated on a parcel as compared to the county and city or county and the school district. So how is a TIF district created? There's a project area, a development district where a portion of the TIF dollars can be spent with limitations. Again, there's, has to be qualifying costs, and we'll get into that in a little bit. And then there has to be a specific project within that overall development district. I believe the city of North St. Paul is, is created in a complete development district, and then they're subdivided into specific projects for a definitive, specific project of a TIF district itself. There's a TIF plan that is developed and needs to go through approval. There's a budget. There's geographical boundaries. There has to be a purpose. There's a public hearing process to it, and then eventually it gets certified as a TIF district. What drives the need for public financing is kind of, again, if you're looking at a developer coming in, they're going to be looking at coming in, doing a development, looking at all of their costs, all of the potential revenues, and they're going to be looking at, does this still give a decent return on investment? If it doesn't, because of something that may be with the property itself, some extraordinary redevelopment costs. In other words, the site has a lot of soil contamination to it, and there's going to be a lot of increased costs. If they were to bear all of those costs themselves, they would turn around and say, we're not doing this development. It doesn't make sense to us. There can be extraordinary affordable housing costs. There can be, you could have a, a property owner that holds out because they want to, you're trying to acquire that property, but the land price is too high. Again, to make it a feasible project for them, and so that's where, you know, the TIF could end up helping out in acquiring that property. The development needs more than it can pay for. There's oversizing of the utility and infrastructure for future growth. So those are qualifying components to it that can be utilized for qualifying costs. The developer wants less risk and more return than a typical market condition dictates, and just market competition. So it's really how do you attract a developer to come in? And again, they're going to be, they're going into it looking at, you know, in their minds, some sort of certain return on investment. And if the numbers don't jive, then they're going to end up trying to look for some sort of public assistance through the TIF. There's different types of TIF districts. There's the economic development. That has an eight-year maximum term. There's housing. That has a 25-year maximum term. There's a redevelopment that also has a 25-year maximum term. A renewal or renovation has a 15-year maximum term, and there are soil conditions that have a 20-year maximum term. Some of those eligible costs, again, are public improvements, but they have to be project-related. They can be streets, sidewalks, sewers, water on the, right on the site or adjacent to it. The land acquisition costs, because they may be higher than, than normal. Soil correction and site grading, site preparation and demolition, relocation costs, cost of qualifying housing, financing fees, capitalized interest, and administrative costs. Those are eligible costs underneath that can be reimbursed through the TIF. There's financing methods. There's upfront, and upfront would be where the city would be the one who would be paying those costs. A district that we have upfront costs that we went out and bonded for, the Centennial, is one in which we bonded for the street components that are upfront there and some of the extraordinary site work that needed to be done. There's also interfund loans. We do have interfund loans on some of the anchor, anchor block, north housing, housing and anchor block south soils. And that's an interfund loan that was approved by City Council, and the funds came from the electric fund. And it's being paid back over time through that tax increment financing. Now, an upfront cost, the risk is on the city. And so if by some chance the value of the property doesn't go up as high, and it doesn't generate as much taxes, you still have to pay the debt. You still have to pay the bonds off. And so what you try to do in that, in those circumstances is that you will make the developer have a minimum assessment agreement. In other words, you say, this is the minimum value of that property. So if values go way down, that always stays, can never go below that number. It can go higher, but it can never go below. Then you're more guaranteed that you're going to be generating those property taxes. However, you're still at risk. If the property taxes aren't paid, you still have to pay the debt. My, my preferable way of doing it is a pay-as-you-go, a pay-go note. And that's where the project is financed upfront by the developer, so they cover all of those costs. The city enters into a pay-go note with the developer at a certain set interest, certain set dollar amount for the project costs, which have to be verified that they've actually, we get all, it's like an open book. We get all of their expenditures to justify that they've actually spent that amount. And then the TIF money then goes and pays that, and usually it's set up twice a year. It's some, some timeframe. Sometimes it's February 1st and August 1st. Some of them are end of December and end of June. So they're usually paid twice, and so, and they correspond really with when property taxes are coming in, because property taxes are due primarily twice a year. And the developers then reimburse over time through that increment. Now, in this case, if the increment over the life of that TIF district never generates enough tax increment, city doesn't have to pay anymore. The developer just doesn't get all of the money that they would have been entitled to with the interest. When it ends, it ends. So they're at risk moving forward with this. And this is a good example of the most recent TIF that we, that we did that with former Lilly Publishing Building, that's now known as the Article VII, that we were approached by the developer. What's nice about it is that we get to see all of their anticipated costs. We can question any one of their estimates. We can request them to show us quotes that they've gone out in the market and where they're at. We get to see how they're projecting their revenues, estimating a number of units that, you know, per the units that they're, they're going to be building, what would be the market rate for those, so we can kind of look at all of their revenues. And at the end of the day, with interest rates and, and, you know, a capital return on their investment, they're going to say, yes, we can make it on our own, or no, we can't make it on our own. And there's a gap here, and we would need to have additional money because of site remediation. It can be, we're building up an underground parking ramp, and that's, you know, a big piece here in this city because there's not a lot of parking. But that qual, that's a qualifying cost that the TIF could, could end up, you know, covering. And so in that circumstance, they, they came, and, and I've got to give a lot of credit for the developer, Mr. Lavelle. Lavelle. He was very honest, open, straightforward with us. We had a whole team when we first met with him to go through all the numbers. He came in by himself. He didn't bring an attorney with him. He didn't bring anything. He was very open, showed us everything, tried to make it work the best that he could without requesting any additional funds. It just wasn't there. It was the timing of it. Interest rates were on their way up. And so he did just an excellent job of working with the city and trying to make that development happen. We entered into a TIF agreement with him. It's a pay-go. It's a pay-as-you-go. He also, to help the financing side for himself, he entered into a minimum assessment agreement to kind of remove some of that risk for, you know, the finance, the bank, instead of the city. So this year, I believe, will be the first year we'll start to receive some increment on that property. A little bit too early to see where we're going to fall out, but we should end up being pretty good on, on that tax increment district. That's the Article VII that was just, just completed.
Now, is any of the properties on Anchor Block or that storage unit, none of those are TIF, are they?
Mm-hmm.
They are.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'll, I'm going to, I've got two slides I kind of give you. Here's kind of our, the TIF districts that we have and have had. And there's Penn Place, Charles Street, Reflex, which we decertified in 2022. There's Senior Housing, M&amp;I Homes, Anchor Block South. There's Seventh and Margaret, which is Sentinel. Anchor Block North, Housing, and then Commercial, and then the Lilly Building redevelopment is how we named it. Brian can kind of give you a little bit more information on where these are for your references. So just take a moment so Brian can kind of give that kind of information on these districts.
Just the one on Charles Street, the building that's down.
It's the Dewe building where Jubilee used to be.
Yeah, it's on Charles Street, I believe, it's built on Southern, but it's on Charles' address.
If it's got a Charles' address. I think it does, yeah. It's kind of angled up 45 off the corner there, so, yeah. Yeah, so Penn Place, that's a, that included all of those townhomes along with that apartment complex. Charles Street, like I said, is the Dewe building. The Senior Housing, that's the one on Helen. The M&amp;I Homes is on the south side. That's all the homes that are anywhere from four-plex to five-plexes over there. And then Uptown Commons, Seventh and Margaret, as you know. Anchor Block North Housing is the large apartment building that's down there. And then Anchor Block North Commercial, that ended up being, did a large soil correction down there. That, that had to have been six, eight feet deep and as big as a football field, and there was a lot of soil changed out there. Right. And then, as you know, the Lilly Building or Article VII is that last one there.
So this is the annual disclosure for 2023. And kind of give you a little bit of how we financed and then kind of what we're looking at for potential times when these could be paid off, if they could be paid off early. The first one, the Penn Place, that's financed through bonds. And the required decertification is end of '29. Our bonds run through 2028. So that'll be out there for a while. TIF 404, Charles Street, bonds, and the bonds coincide with the, the date of required decertification of 2032. Reflex was decertified. Helen Street, the Senior Housing, it has a decertification date at the end of 2041. I kind of did a projection based upon what we received in tax increment this past year in 2024. And I see it that we possibly could be done with that at the end of '29 instead of '41. The Anchor Block South Housing, that has a pay-go note onto it. And it looks like instead of '41, we probably could, if, again, I'm taking the assumption we get the same increment we did in 2024, we'd be able to be paid off, paid off the pay-go note 2030, end of 2034. The North St. Paul Apartments, the TIF 408, there's bonds that are associated with that. The bonds go out to 2047. And then the North Block, or Anchor Block North Housing is a pay-go and an internal fund loan. That one, the pay-go should be done about 2039. Little trickier, and I didn't have time to go see how, if, if that would correspond with our interfund loan to be paid off. So it's kind of tricky to find out when that one's going to be done. The Anchor Block South soils is completely an interfund loan. And that one, instead of '42, looks like about 2040. So some of them can sunset a little bit earlier.
Just out of curiosity, Dan, that, that internal loan for, was that strictly for the intersection there with the traffic signals as opposed to the building itself? Do you remember?
Well, it's not for the building. Because that's not a qualifying cost part to it, so.
Or that's for the property that I meant, yeah. Okay.
What happens if any of these businesses that are under the TIF go out of business? What happens? Do the, do they have to cover up their tax money that they owe? You know, like the.
Oh, sorry. Like the storage units down there, what happens if they went out of business?
Well, I don't believe that any of them have a minimum assessment value onto it, and that's, again, the part of that property tax if they don't pay it.
Right.
That's why a pay-go note, you know, we're not at risk. But if we don't get the increment in, the interfund loan doesn't get paid. The interest will keep accumulating, but we won't be getting paid, so we have, we have risk in those components like that. And then obviously, if the taxes aren't paid, and it goes through a certain process, I think it's five years of delinquency, then they go into judgment and so forth, you know, as time moves on. There's always the opportunity when a business goes, you know, out of business, that they may end up trying to get an abatement of taxes, which I think you can go for the current and three prior years and try to do a petition for that. And so they can reduce that, which then could end up hurting us in those circumstances.
This would be the same like for Polar Ridge also, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, and that's part of that risk piece to it, and that's where if it's a pay-go note, it doesn't hurt us. But if it's, you know, anything that the city's carrying the debt, then, you know, there, there's always a risk that's associated. So far, everything's.
Been good.
Playing out good, and so hopefully that'll continue.
Dan, if there is a minimum assessed value, is that tied to the life of the TIF?
Yes. Yep. There was some special legislation for those council members who were here at the, the time that we exercised. It allowed us to do some pooling. We pooled some excess funds that are in 404, 44, and 46. And I think we pooled about, like about $1.1 million, $1.2. And then it allows, those funds can be used if it's to provide improvements or loans or interest rate subsidies or assistance in the form. There's some criteria there in the middle. And we did use approximately about $800,000 on the Article VII. We have $400,000 that's still in that TIF. It expires at the end of this year. Whatever funds are not used, they'll revert back to these TIF districts. So if we were, when I look at like TIF 4042, even though it's going to be out there a while and we have a pay-go note, we are accumulating more TIF than we actually need. So at the point in time when that TIF district gets decertified, whatever remaining funds has, has to be returned to Ramsey County. And then Ramsey County will distribute it to all of the, you know, taxing authorities, the county, the city will get a third of it, the school district, and so forth. We had a little bit extra when Reflex was decertified, not a lot, but, and then it'll come back. We get a third of it. That'll come back to us, but we're required then to report that and, and send the money to Ramsey County when we decertify. There's some general pooling authorities that are there, depending on the date of a, of a TIF district, that, you know, can allow a certain percentage of increment to be pooled for other future uses. We really haven't exercised that, you know, in the past, but there are some that are available. That's where, you know, when you start to get into, there's a lot of technical components that are there, and that's why, you know, we do have a TIF consultant that will assist the city when we go through some of those different components. And that's where, at the end of the day, that the city may, at some point in time, want to look at developing a TIF policy. And many cities do have TIF policies. You know, it kind of will be a guiding document to be able to know what projects should move forward. You know, it may be a recommendation of what type of funding sources that the city would be, has more of an appetite for. Again, I keep saying I'm, I'm more in favor of a pay-go versus in the city incurring the debt for a developer. But those are just some things for the future for the city to think about. So that's a, kind of a high-level look at TIF and, and open it up and welcome any questions or.
I'm going to be on the EDA. And I'm just, I'll be the liaison, I guess. Is it going to be advisable that we proceed with more TIF projects?
Again, collectively, that's, that's a city council's decision, and it really comes down to the, the business sense for the city. If there's a development that would not happen and the city believes that it, it has an, an opportunity to really spur on maybe additional economic development, bring in jobs, bring in whatever the case may be, and those were, where the policy would help if it hit certain criteria, then it's, you know, it gets rated higher than others. But yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a financing tool. Again, I would look at it as, let's do pay-go notes with it versus the city going out and bonding. The city does have a lot of debt for, you know, a debt ratio for a small city, so we. of debt for, you know, a debt ratio for a small city. So we don't want to be using up some of, some of our general obligation, you know, authority and rule, room for a developer to come in. But again, if it's something that it's a once in a lifetime type of opportunity for the city, you know, then you, then you may want to issue debt ahead of time. I mean, that's, to me, it really comes down to what does it really look like on the development and what's, what is it going to give the city in the long run?
For the Margaret Commons across the street, that's why that building's still there to keep us qualified for TIFF, is that correct?
Correct.
If we can use it or not, but with something to be torn down.
Correct.
The old dentist's office, right?
Yeah.
Across the street here, yeah.
It's already been determined as blight for that reason?
So that property over to the driveways and to re-inflow, whatever the school in there, that whole property is available for a possible...
Correct.
Yeah, we rezoned it this year. One PID instead of, there was five there because it was so small.
Yeah, we want to have one large one, yeah. Well, that's what I'm hoping build up this year, or next year, next year, whatever.
Any other questions on TIFF? All right, let's move on to the next one. Next one we're going to look at is, kind of give you a look at how we're ending 2024. There are still some adjusting entries that need to be done. We're pretty close to everything. Capital hasn't been, I think at the time I put this together, capital hasn't been put into it, depreciation hasn't been kelched onto it. There's still, I think, pension liability journal entries that need to be done, which hit enterprise funds. And then there's compensated absences. There's a new Gatsby change that has not reflected. Again, doesn't, won't hit the general fund because it's notes for the general fund, but it will hit our enterprise funds. So how did we, how did we do in the general fund? I've got us right now that we're over $1 million in surplus from the 2024 budget. And I know, how did we do that? Well, it's a combination of some additional revenues and expenditures. So I'll kind of give you a kind of a, an explanation on approximately about $910,000 worth of that million dollars. And so we've received additional grants and a higher amount in police aid than we had estimated and knew that we were going to get to the tune of about $161,000. Market value adjustments in investment income, because we conservatively budgeted those numbers, was approximately about $170,000 above where we were at. That's on the revenue side. So that comes to about, you know, $330,000 to the positive. And then if we look at the departments, administration had a decent savings of a little over $100,000. It really is attributed to savings in legal services and use of consultants from past years. Finance Department had about a $71,000 savings. And that's because we've had, we've run a vacant accountant position since early part of April of last year. Police had approximately about $240,000 savings. Even though we paid a lot in overtime, we still see a significant savings. And that's because we pretty much averaged about four vacant positions throughout the whole entire year. Ebb didn't flow, but pretty much stuck around that, that area there. Street Maintenance had a little over $100,000 savings. Part of that is due to what we budgeted in for the number of summer help. We didn't have as many as those. So that's something that we can look at and tighten up again in this next budget year. And then they had save, savings in their motor fuels and salt. And that's because we had a pretty mild, might, yeah. And then Park Maintenance had approximately about a $58,000 savings, again, the summer help. And then didn't spend compared to historical in their materials line items. So our expenditures in those items amounted to about $580,000. Kind of shows where we were at, about $910,000 of that savings. What this means is that we're sitting good and starting off for our next year budget. Now, part of that, I'll use as a million, that million dollar savings, part of it will have to be retained in fund balance for the general fund as our fund balance policy requires that we try to achieve a 50% of the subsequent budget year. So the 25 budget went up, so we're going to need something to be held over there. What is going to be left then will be brought back to city council as we go through the budget process of how we want to utilize that. We have to remember, it's one-time money. Means that it can't, it really shouldn't be utilized to offset ongoing operational costs because once it's gone, then you've got this big leap in levies. It really should be utilized for things that we've been working on in the past three years. Basically, our infrastructure, our streets, our facilities, our parks. And so when we work on the budget, Brian and I will present recommendations for city, city councils to consider. And it'll be up to you how you want to do that. So one of the, the quick just looks at it is that we've been putting dedicated increase in levy for facilities and streets. We should be able to reduce that, but still keep on our plan by utilizing some of that savings and being able to take care of those, those three infrastructural areas. But that's, that's good news that we're in there. Again, Brian's done an excellent job. He's, I think at least two, if not three times in our department head meetings, he has told all department heads that this upcoming budget, that we're going to do our darndest to hold down our levy increase. And so department heads have responded very favorable to that. And they're already starting to look at ways that they can be able to cut back. So more to come on to that when we move into the budget. I also kind of wanted to just show you how we, we did on our enterprise funds. Because those are the, those are the bigger, the general fund and the, and the enterprise funds are the bigger ones. The water fund, so if you, in these formats, the, the first column is what was approved or adopted for the 24 budget. The next column will show you what the actuals, again, there's still some journal entries and so forth that, so these numbers are not final. They're unaudited at this point. And it kind of show you where we're going to, you know, our positive or our negative, how we did. And so this fund, the water fund shows that we, that we, based upon where we were projecting, we were projecting that we were going to increase our fund balance about 682,000. It looks like we're going to increase it about 737 or $55,000 to the better. If you look a little bit closer on to this, you can see that the water, the charges for services for water were $255 under budget. And that's because we had a pretty rainy summertime. So the water usage was not as high. But we offset that by definitely increase in revenues on the other revenues, which is basically $246,000 is investments in market value adjustments. So again, that, that has been, last year and this year have been really big, huge driving factors for us because we don't budget all the way out on our investments. And so that allows us to be in a better position. And with the interest rates that we've been receiving the last couple of years, again, I think this year total, we're again, I think even higher than last year, over 1.2 million in investment income that we've, that we've gotten. The next one, wastewater, you can see, again, everything tracks pretty good on, on to this. Again, the other revenues are up. Again, there's market value and income, investment income that make up $130,000 over our budgeted amount. And then we got connection charges, which are whack and sack charges that come to the city primarily because of Article Number Seven going. So it's not something that we can rely on year after year. But that was 112,000 of that. So that shows kind of where, where that increases came. Again, we're outperforming where we're at budget when we look at the bottom line, $263,000. So again, another good news on those, which I'm hoping with these positive numbers that we're seeing, that we won't have to change rates in our utilities coming into this next budget year. The next one, the electric fund, again, not, not a lot of electric usage in compared to prior years. If you look for that, look at that charges for services, down almost $720,000. But again, other revenue, market value and investment, 412,000 over budget. Penalties, which we didn't budget penalties because that was the first year of having penalties, 123,000. And then processing fees of $130,000. So basically makes up that difference. You'll see on the expenditure side that there's a big savings in the contractual services. That's due to, again, the electrical usage of what we paid to MMPA. We didn't have the usage from our residents. We don't have the pay on the other side to it. So even though the revenue's down, so is the expenditure side to it. Again, this one performed better than where we're at. And if you remember, we transferred 1.1 million out of this fund to start our pavement preservation program. So we were looking at having a negative change in our fund balance of about 1.1 million. It looks like we'll only have a $300,000 reduction. So we were looking at about $800,000 to the positive from where we were at from a budgetary standpoint. So again, good news. Surface water, again, the biggest revenue difference, again, is due to that market value and investment income. Basically makes up that whole $168,000. And then there's savings in capital. There was, what was on our CIP plan for some pond dredging, did not happen. And then our pavement rehabilitation project is not totally complete, but it looks like it's, it's well remain underneath what was estimated in the budget, which we budgeted our pavement preservation numbers kind of at a higher estimate based upon what WSB gives to us. And so there wasn't as much surface water, which is good news because this is, this is the fund that could end up being in the biggest trouble, because you can see you only have a budget of a million dollars. This is the one when we were looking at our financial plans that really needed a lot of help. So this is really good news to see. And then solid waste, basically the garbage, pretty much in line. Same thing with our fiber optics, if I keep up this way. You can see they're, they're pretty much, we're right in line with what we budgeted. Only, you know, like $4,000 difference. So that's kind of how we, we did on our major budgets for 2024. Again, good news. And I think it puts us in a really good position to lessen and keep the burden of increases in levy for, and rates for our residents moving into the 2026 budget. Any questions?
Yeah.
Where does that, oh, no, go ahead. Where does that fiber optic fund, where is the fiber optic located that you're drawing the revenue from?
The revenue, we have long-term agreements with Oakdale, Maplewood. I think those are the two jurisdictions that we get money from them. And then we also charge our departments. It's a, a charge for, for their utilization of the fiber.
So this is through the electric department?
No, it's its own fund. You'll, you'll see later on, when we get to the finished audit and the auditor comes in and does a presentation. This is one of their concerns. And you'll see why is because this has a negative fund balance of over $2 million. And it'll take us probably 20 some years to get to a break even point on to this. And there's a historical component to all of this of why this was done at one point in time, but it never came about to the magnitude it should have.
The lines are that are in the community center, is that part of that fiber optic then?
Yes.
Dan, on the enterprise funds, there is a line item under expenditures on all of them, debt issuance and interest. Can you explain that line a little bit more in detail? Where I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around, and I'll just take one example, is like the electric fund. How were we able to transfer a bunch of money out of it, but if we're still paying interest on debt? Does that make sense where I'm getting confused?
Well, there, there's bonded debt in each one of our funds. Well, not all of our funds. It's in the electric, water, wastewater, and surface water. And so the electric had a bonded debt. It was a buy American bonds related to the public works facility. That just got paid off in February. So you won't see that going forward into the future. So we didn't have an opportunity to, even though we have the money to pay it early. Some bonds, you have the ability to do that, some you don't. Some, if you pay off early, you pay all the interest moving forward. And it just, so we look at, I'm getting ahead of myself here. So we look at that every couple of years to see if there's any opportunities to maybe pay them off or to go back out and reissue and then pay those old bonds off. Maybe the interest rates are better, anything, the savings. We looked at it, this past year, there wasn't anything across the board that, that was enough for us to be able to, because there's bond costs that are associated with it to offset those costs. So no opportunities. But in the electric fund, you won't lot see that anymore. It's fully paid off. So it still has a huge fund balance. And that's the reason why it was recommended and the city council approved to, to basically transfer that money from electric last year in '24 to get going on the pavement preservation.
Is, is it typical for bonds to have penalties or not to have bonuses for early payment for, for city borrowed debt?
Yeah. Yeah. It's just, yeah, most of them do, and most of them you can't call until, you know, the latter years of the 20 years and that stuff. So every, every circumstance we have to look at, usually you can't call a bond in its first 10 years. You may be able to call it later on. These bonds, particularly in the electric, because they were Build America bonds, we get a good sizable of, of that payment of the interest, we pretty much get it all back. I fill out a form on an annual basis and I pretty much get a good chunk of it back from, from the federal government. So that, at the end of the day, has a very, very low interest. So the truth to it is, what we're doing as in investing in the fund balance, we made more than what we paid on interest of those bonds.
And is that the same on the indebted bond for like the street projects and stuff too? Are you able to get, or is that specific to enterprise fund bonds?
Those other bonds are not Build America bonds. They're basically general, backed up by the general obligation, but they're revenue bonds that were, most of them were all tied into street projects. And so again, we And so again, we look at them.
Right, but are you able to get refunds on that interest or?
No, no, because that was just something that was part of the Build American bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on those before we move on? And then the next topic is to kind of just to get your thoughts. We want to spend a great amount of time, but get your thoughts on the 2026 budget process, kind of open discussion. I'm going to provide a schedule and then kind of seek your direction. This is a budget schedule and it's very similar to what it was done last year. Although last year we kind of fell off schedule a little bit because we were waiting for some of those, like the, remember the facility assessment and so forth. But you can see with the asterisk, those are the number of city council meetings, whether they're a workshop or a council meeting that we would have. And so really kind of want to look to you for your direction. Do we want to have that many meetings? I know there's been some discussion about kind of setting up what we're going to have in different workshops throughout the year so city council can get some different issues addressed. We're taking, you know, the budget takes up a lot of those spaces. And so it's just kind of opening up for a discussion of what your preference is. Many cities do not have as many meetings as we do. You know, there may be three before they certify their maximum levy. And it's basically at a very high, the maximum levy is done in middle of September. So if you can see, we'll have scheduled seven meetings to get there. And it's usually, you know, it's the city administrator, city manager presents a budget, you know, with the finance director will tell you what the levy impact is. City council will really look at it from a high level and is that acceptable or not? Give direction to staff, in our case, the city manager and staff, to come back at a, maybe at a lower levy. It's then on us to come back with, to meet whatever is set by city council. And if it ends up having some sort of impact on service, then we need to let city council know that. And the city council has the option to either hold that lower levy or to add it back and not have as many meetings. But again, it's totally up to your preference. I'm really looking for more direction and thought on your part of what your comfort level is because ultimately you make that final decision.
When we look at this here now, where would, if we do cut back, where would we start? And as far as, to start with the staff and everybody else going through the first, like the July ones and everything else, getting everything prepared and then come back to us when? September, is that what you said?
Well, I would say we, you know, we would probably come and do early August. Yeah, we probably would give you general fund, we'd probably give you a preliminary on every budget all at once. It just wouldn't go through a lot of great detail. It would be more of, do you have questions? And we would have staff here to answer any questions for any of their budgets and then seek your direction on, is this acceptable or not? Or we have more work to do? And then if that was the case, then we would come back, probably the first meeting in September, with have we met it, have we not, where we're at? And then the second meeting in September, we would turn around and certify that maximum levy. Doesn't mean that there can't be more meetings after, yeah. You remember, it's the maximum levy, it certainly can go down, but it can't go up from that point.
So like the one is June 3rd, city manager budget presented to the council. So that would be what we would still have, but the preliminary would be done by staff and everybody else before that?
Well, we would push that, that would, that preliminary one would probably be, we would put everything all together and have the city manager budget and enterprise and everything else together in like that early August move date.
I'm just trying to see what the calendar would look like.
I like that idea.
You like that idea.
So that June 3rd, bringing it down to August, I mean, I think that's, I like that idea. I like to cut as much, I mean, when we first started, it was six months of budget conversation.
Right.
That's a lot. And if we can cut that to four months or, I mean, whatever that looks like, I would like to see us cut that more and have less special meetings. And I'm sure you guys feel the same way. I mean, you're here all day and then to be here for special meetings, I'd like to see less of that too. And how can we do that? As you're looking for our guidance, we're also looking for some of your guidance. I mean, I can't speak for everyone at the stand, but I would like to see what kind of guidance can you provide us? And say, you know what, technically we could cut here, we could cut here.
Yeah, no, I think this figure, so for me, I probably would have one additional meeting and it was sole purpose of it would be on CIP.
Which I think is important, yes.
You've heard me say it over and over again, yeah, it's a big driver. So I probably would have that and probably have it like the July 15th and then the August 5th would be all of the budgets taken into, you know, it would incorporate the CIP into it, as in the past. And then basically by the September 16th, we kind of really are done with a lot of, well, with the budgets. After that, it would be if city council had the desire to relook at something. So to me, it would be the concerns of the levy didn't get as low as you thought it would. You still want to work on that. Certainly would do that. If there had been potential increases in enterprise rates on water, wastewater, whatever, you want to go through that a little bit more. Would certainly be the opportunity to do that component to it. So you may still want to have some meetings, but you would pick those meetings, they would flush out as we went through the process. But hopefully by about that September 16th, we would be at about a 90% done with the budget.
That sounds amazing.
Yeah, because we're still done here and it's just when it comes to us.
Yeah.
If we shorten the meetings, is there any bonus to the budget? Can you say, will this save the city any money?
What do you mean?
Well, if they cut out three of these meetings, is there a labor savings that they're going to say this will save?
So if we cut three of like these specific meetings we're having during workshop?
Well, any of these meetings, does it result in a savings to the city?
Not really from the standpoint that your department heads are all salaried. So you're going to be here one way or the other. But I certainly will take overtime if, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, right. I'll take a bonus for this.
Instead of using workshop time for these presentations and things like that, they could be used for other things.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a lot of items that are still outstanding that need to be, you know, more information needs to be, you know, whatever information the city council wants that staff has to put together. And I'd rather see staff working on gathering that information so city council can make some bigger decisions that drive, I think, the city and the city's future.
That's kind of what the council is.
Right.
Exactly, yeah.
I agree.
As long as we have the information and have the opportunity to ask the questions.
Oh, for sure.
I'm going to be an outlier and say, I think we should have it stay the same way with no savings to the city. The biggest public engagement that we get are all on taxes. So are we doing a disservice to our residents to not spend this much time and this much focus on them?
In my mind, we seem to be spending it, it's just at the later dates because we're all the information back. It's not trickling, it's more and then we go from there. Is that wrong?
No, I don't think, I don't think that that's wrong. I mean, I.
That's my understanding is we're all going to get it there, it's just a later date. It's going to come instead of just the one here and one there type of thing.
Right. I don't disagree with council member Nordby and your view on to it. It comes down to there's so many meetings that you can have in a year, so many workshops, so many council meetings. If you want to have specials, which we have done quite a few in the last few years for the budget because we have other items on workshop. If you're willing to do that, let's keep it the same. If not, then I would recommend utilizing those times for other things. You're still not getting, you're still not losing the importance of setting the budget. You're still not losing the importance of the impact that that levy has on residents. I think you have all done such a great job on that and are aware of that. I don't think you've lost any of that. And it still opens up that you still can want additional meetings and, you know, even afterwards. It's totally up to you. It means if we try to do this, it means instead of having all of these meetings, city staff works at putting and getting everything together upfront for you to see quicker than we have in the past. But I don't disagree one, it's really up to you. That's really, it's your decision at the end of the day.
Seems like a lot of them we did was, you know, you would say your piece and you'd ask, we have any questions? And then we'd go, nope, and then we'd move on and then move on.
Exactly.
I think the value comes in being able to use those, that time for other discussions, you know, not necessarily budget related. Especially as a new member, it gives us the opportunity to kind of take advantage of those times to learn more about the different departments and things like that, so.
If the public is looking for more information, we are always available for any kind of calls and explanation, so.
Councilmember, any thoughts after that?
No.
Difference to what was said or is it still the same, what you want?
I don't feel, I don't feel super strongly that I don't want it to change, but I'm one of five, my personal thought is leave it the same, but I'm okay with, I'm not super strong against it changing. So if the will of four is one to change, I'm okay with that. Like I said, I just, I know on the meetings out there when we're doing the finance, I want to be able to look everyone square in the eye and say, I thoroughly reviewed this budget. This is what I believe has to be done for the city.
And to me.
But I think if we have a little bit more, then people can get to it more. Instead of feel like, oh, I missed something that last time, oh, I missed it that time. And then, you know, if it's, we get out and here's what we're going to, this is how far we are, maybe we'll get more people because, okay, I can hit that one and get an update.
Yeah, you'll get, you'll get a bigger picture quicker. No, it, you're still going to get, it'll still be given publicly all of the information that you've seen in the past. Word of caution, because we're going to have less meetings, it means that you need to look at that material ahead of time so we're prepared when we come into that meeting. So everybody, staff, council have to be prepared to go through it and get it and ask those tough questions and make those tough decisions. But I, all of the disclosure as far as information, it's still all going to be a part of the package.
I guess my final question then is, will this cut down on the amount of times we get pizza?
For you, no.
Councilmember Kenzie, you have any, you haven't, thoughts from you?
No, I just want to learn and do a lot of this stuff. And I got one question to ask you. How often do you bang your head on the table to know all this stuff?
I don't.
That's Dan's favorite.
All of this is, again, you've heard me say it and I'll say it again when I give my quick, now my quick update on the department. No, this is a fantastic city. They have a fantastic city council, great city manager, staff is amazing. This is a great organization. And no, I, it's like a big, it's like a puzzle and you just try to put it together, but it's fun.
We should give you, does everybody agree to the?
Shortened.
I just want to make sure we give them.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I would, I would be in favor of shortened and I would like to see less, much less special meetings this year.
Okay. I'll do a modified schedule and then share it to.
And I, yeah, I think, are we good with everybody? I don't want to just.
I might do is I might call you and come in a day and just we'll go through it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Dan's awesome. All this really means is he's going to get more emails from me outside of meetings rather than questions at the council. So I'm good with it.
What?
I just wanted to know where he rolls all that money into his pocket.
All right, well, thank you.
And I have one more. And you switched the date on that one. Finance update. First of all, I want to thank you all for your leadership. It is so important and I have felt so welcomed since the first day that I ever came to the city. And even though city council members have changed, I still feel welcomed every day when I come into this organization. Finance staff couldn't do what we do without these individuals. Our utility billing coordinator has been in the city for almost 40 years. Does an absolutely excellent job, Taylor Lilly. She will someday be Barb when Barb decides to retire. Knows the utility billing inside and out, goes way above. Some of the things that you may not be aware of is that we have some pretty good technology, like on the electric side with the meters and some software that we can look at. And when they see, whether it's a water bill or an electric bill that's higher than it has been in the past, they go through and they analyze it. And they'll call the resident up and say, hey, your water usage is high. Do you by chance have a toilet that's running? And nine out of 10 times, they do. They do an absolutely fabulous job. And then Melissa's the newest of the three that's in there. Absolutely customer service, very quiet spoken individual, very intelligent. She is the one you heard me talk about that is working on her accounting degree. And part of, as I get older, my legacy in my career in government is to see her become an accountant in government and in here with the city of North St. Paul. Then we have Jackie who does so much. Payroll accounts payable, just does an amazing job, very accurate. Rely on her very, very heavily. Angie is learning the components that Jackie does. And then there's myself, I just sit with piles on my desk and thank the stars that I have, the staff that I have. They make my life very easy and allow me to do the time that I need to on some of the other bigger items that are there without a lot of issues. What do we do, accounts payable, receivable, budgeting, capital assets, cash management, debt administration, financial analysis, financial reporting, investments, payroll procurement, special assessments and property taxes, tax increment financing and utility billing and customer service. I have to go quick, right? So I'm going to focus on the utility billing and customer service. And part of the reason is because, you know, that's, you know, we generate over $20 million in, you know, in our utilities. But before that, what are some of the things we're working on? Payroll conversion, we gave it one attempt, it didn't work with a vendor. I've got a draft RFP that hopefully next Monday we hit the streets with looking for a payroll system and hopefully a payroll provider to do some of the, you know, the ACHs and so forth. And we don't have an HR system, so it's really a payroll HR system that would be a part of it. We really need to implement some sort of purchase order tracking system to make sure that we're meeting state statutes. That may be something that would, that will come up in our audit findings this upcoming year. And then security is a big issue for our staff utility. First of all, I want to thank city council for your support on the glass that is now down on both the community development side and the finance side. And then I'm going to jump ahead here a little bit, but I'm going to tie it into security. But we need to, I've been working with Brian on both staff redundancy and succession planning. I'm not getting any younger, I know, it's hard to believe. But need to start looking at some of those components to make sure we're, that the city's in good, has a good future and is in good hands moving forward. Really kind of, kind of working and I kind of, there's a lot of statistics. Really kind of, kind of working and I, I kind of, there's a lot of statistics to kind of show you, you know, the different bill paying and you can see because we made a big change in, you know, charging a credit card fee, you can see that the customers have shifted how they, big time of how they, they do things, a lot more bank drafts now. So they don't get that 2.2 and a quarter percent added on. But here's kind of the interesting piece, piece that I want to go on, it ties into security since I've got eight minutes to go or less, I'll try to wrap it up on five, so give everybody a time to break for a little bit. But if you notice on there that on, on an average, we, we mail out 457 disconnection notices per month. Disconnection notices is basically that you are two complete months behind and the third month has just been issued. So you know that we bill our utilities for the past month of usage. So it's really three months of usage before a disconnection notice goes out. That's, that's a lot. That's, that's a lot that we're mailing out. And then we end up, you know, after those notices go through, then we end up giving, you know, there's a call generation that goes out to these individuals. And at the end of the day, we usually end up with, you know, 40, 50 that end up going through the, to, to be disconnected. We've got to follow the cold winter weather rule that basically if your sole source of heat is electric, you can't completely cut them off. But if they're an apartment and it's not their main source, we can cut them off completely. If not, we can do what we, kind of a, a cycle where it's on 30 minutes and off 30 minutes. Our system will allow us to do that. It's amazing that we have so many great residents here, but yet there are a number of them that are nasty. Some of the phone calls that, that staff receive should never, ever occur. There's been threatened. We had one a few weeks ago, about three weeks ago, where a person basically threatened to, to cut the person's throat over the phone. So there's a heightened concern for my staff and the glass helps a great deal. The other piece that we're looking at, that I'm talking with Brian on these next two pieces, one that we're looking at, and it's been something that had been identified before I came here, the city had gone through an active shooting training at one point in time. There's no act, exit out of finance. The two exit points bring you back into the hallway. So there's a office that's, is unutilized that we're probably going to look at getting a quote to open the door back there that we'd come out by the fire bay, you know, for that. In addition is that we're looking at, and I've, I've had a, getting some pricing, I've talked to Metro Inet, getting some prices on just a small device that we would be able to record phone messages in case that we had, you know, threatening pieces that we could utilize that to, to help our, our police, because our police did, did respond very well. But that is a huge concern that staff has. And like I said before, you know, I, I can't do what our department, I can't and our department can't do without our, our staff. Our staff has done an amazing job and continue to do an amazing job day in and day out, very dedicated individuals. That's kind of where I'm going to leave you at. There's a lot of statistics. If you have any questions, you know, let me know. But proud of our, our finance department, our, our staff. Maybe a little bit later, about a month or so, I'll invite a couple of employees here and we'll do a formal recognition of us receiving a certificate of excellence for our financial statement for 2023. We have a really nice plaque that we received. It's like about the 37th year that the city's got it, but it's nonetheless, it's, it's impressive. And I want to bring the people that help that happen. And I think I bring Barb and Jackie, the two big contributors that helped me get through those year end processes. Which I have one more. I've got, next week the adders are in, hopefully for the last time. But we're, we've been busy in finance department, love this city, we have great leadership. Just want city council to know, I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll call for adjournment at 6:27.
So moved?
So moved, councilmember Nordby.
Second.
Second, councilmember Woods. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's take about five minutes to refresh and we'll be back.